Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Boarding for September 7, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge leases to the flag of the United States of America. A considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a quorum for minutes?
Yeah, yeah, because I can vote tonight. I'm just thinking going back to this.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I just need you guys to make motions.
Everybody read them?
Did you read the minutes? Yeah.
I was waiting to make sure Ryan and you.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for the August 17th Planning Board meeting as written.
I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed? Three, nothing. All right. New business, John O'Keefe, 193 Fox's Ridge Road, map 248, lot 009.6.6.4, site plan review preliminary hearing, meeting.
I have to speak into the mic here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, it'll pick it up if you speak loud enough.
All right, great. So my name is Michael Menery over at Civil Works New England. This is Joe Griffin at Civil Works New England. And John O'Keefe, the owner. So this project is proposed on a 44-acre lot. You can see on the big map there, 24-248-009 is the lot number. It's in a mixed-use area where we're proposing the work, as well as it's in the aquifer protection zone. So we'll be proposing three self-storage buildings with a total of 8,100 square feet of building. With that, we'll have two BMPs, best management practices. The proposed soil filter, you can see at the bottom-left dish of the site there. And as well as a roofline drip, or a, sorry, the wording, roofline infiltration trench along that backside of the third building. So that'll infiltrate some water. All these BMPs are designed to main's Department of Environmental Protection standards. So the entrance, we submitted to the DOT on the 25th. Still waiting for their response. I think their rules is they have 10 business days to respond, so that should be coming up either tomorrow or Monday. Total disturbance on the site is less than an acre. And yeah, we'll be requesting two waivers. One for WB40 around the site. We made a SU30, which is pretty much just a 30-foot-long box truck along the site, as well as a waiver for landscape screening. And that's because want to have it more open to the, to the south side of the site, so you can have more security from the existing buildings, as well as from the street.
Say that again.
So, yeah, we were asking for a waiver for landscape screening.
Yeah, but why?
So the, for security purposes on the, the existing buildings to the right there. Get a good view for security purposes.
We feel that the, the buffer between the proposed facility and the abutto the north, we feel that that vegetative buffer there is sufficient. And what we would like to do is prevent vegetating in along the road and along the residents to the south, so that people driving by, they see something going on, they can make, make a phone call.
Something you don't see on, on this, as well as we're going to add a gate to the entrance. That's not on this plan yet, but for the full submission, the gate will be there.
What type of gate? Like a customer-accessible, like passcode kind of gate, or?
Yeah.
That's what we're envisioning.
Yeah.
Are there, is that, are there homes on the other side of the street?
So that, on the other side of the street is a herd, herd lumber. And residents as well, yeah.
I'm sorry.
The opposite side of the street has, portion of it is the old herd lumberyard. And then there are residences across the street as well. Residents across the street are lower than the street. And then on our side of the street, we're, we're up above that street elevation. So we took that into consideration when we were looking at the placement of the driveway. We looked at the sighting requirements of a large vehicle, which is the 450 feet, I believe, in town. And we tried to pull that driveway as far towards the old herd lumberyard as we could, so that lights coming from vehicles wouldn't affect those abutto.
Well, I think we'd want to see that when we get to the point of site walk.
So this, this site is also not disturbing any wetland buffers or resource areas?
You were reading my mind.
Yeah, we don't, we don't encroach into the 75-foot stream setback. And we don't encroach into the 50-foot wetland buffer as well.
Did you say there was this, just say there was a stream?
Yeah.
This has, right here, it shows you a, a resource protection right here. 75-foot buffer for the stream. This mark right here. There is a wetland setback right here. There is a, they do have a topo map in here, too.
Is it all going to be, what are you going to do for the vehicles coming in? Is it going to be paved? What's that going to be like?
It's a, it's all paved, that's correct.
Nobody's going in between those first two buildings, left to right?
Customers might, but that's just a fire truck turn. So that would be about where the fire truck would, would go if need be.
Is putting the driveway there going to help some of that ponding that happens up front of there?
So it, it will help some of the ponding, because what this project is going to do is it's going to grab the water that's coming down off that hill into Fox's Ridge Road. It's going to put it into the pond, the proposed soil filter. Is actually a detention pond as well. It'll grab that water and it will discharge it across the driveway directly towards the wetlands. I, I can't guarantee that it's going to alleviate your problem, but we are grabbing a significant area, putting it into that detention pond and bypassing the ditch side as well.
Do we actually have an application? Or is this?
This is just a preliminary one, yeah. So with the site plan review, it gives you the option to come in and talk with the board.
Yep.
Prior to the application.
Yep.
Where you dumping the snow in the window?
Oh, hold on, he's got that on here, too.
I know.
Yeah, along that.
Right here.
North side of the drive.
And then it can be pushed down into that sediment forbey area as well. And that will pre-treat it before it goes into the soil filter.
These units, is it going to be fenced in all around the, this, or just a gate at the front?
I believe that the, the intent is a fence at the front for the time being. I believe that potentially could be expanded in the future. And at that time, the owner would look to possibly provide fencing as well.
Can you go back to the topo?
Sure.
Went the wrong way. Yeah, through that center aisle, there's a bunch of different spot shots and everything. Kind of, I brought a picture and that shows the intent of what it will look like. If you want to pass that around. Kind of flat pads in front of the, the units. There's also be enough room for snow storage, like it looks like, yeah, it looks like you climb nine feet there on that back corner pretty sharply.
Can you go back to the, the fire trucks circling?
That's the box truck there. I think the one before is, yeah, there's a fire truck.
So you'll have, where, there'll be no parking in that route?
Nope, no parking.
That will all be posted? People just park inside of that, along the buildings?
Well, it's a, yeah, it's a storage shed area. So they're not parking their vehicles to leave them there for long periods of time.
No, but.
There'll be no permanent, long-term storage of vehicles. But, yeah, you would have your box truck pull up beside the building, unloading your things, with the intention that if the fire truck is showing up, you would understand. You're probably the one that called. Because these don't have a lot of business at the same time, and that you'd be moving your vehicle.
People can be able to come in and out at any time? I think we discussed this before with you. I think we were going to shut it down.
Not 100% sure, but something probably like eight to eight, or eight to nine, or something reasonable.
Right. I think we discussed it the last time you were in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so on the lighting plan as well, it's, the lights we picked out, they're motion-sense. So at night, it'll be, it'll be dark unless someone needs to go.
What's on that acre now? Is it wooded, or just brush, or?
In this location here, so in this location here, if you drive out there, there's a couple of old asphalt driveways that load, that drive up into the area. It used to be a drying yard for herd lumber. And then, sort of inside that clearing of trees that sort of make the upside-down U there, it's a borrow pit. The owner is using it for gravels throughout the site. So it's a mixture of gravels, old asphalt, and, you know, less than optimal grass, shrubs.
No, I think it's okay. Right, Jason, this is mixed juice?
Yep.
So the building sizes are okay?
Yep.
25 square feet or more?
2,500?
Yeah.
And that's why it's site plan review?
Yep.
You said the waivers you were looking for was the one for the WB40 vehicles and, and the vegetation?
Yep. Landscape buffering, yep.
And then dependent on the DOT's response, if they ask us to change the driveway entrance, we may have to ask for a waiver from a 3% to 3.5 or 4%, but we're awaiting their response at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm agnostic on the waiver requests until we get a little bit more into it, particularly the, the site walk, you know, about the vegetation.
So if we go back to the grading plan, the other portion of this that you'll see is to maintain these, or to provide for these long buildings, we had to cut a significant area out of this hill, this existing hill that's there. So what you'll see after the, sort of, I guess, to the north is essentially a six-foot cut there. So, lights with, that will be, you know, pointed towards that northerly property, the abutto, you'll have that six-foot berm there as well as the existing vegetation. And then in the front of the property, the DOT cut for the road there is pretty significant as well. I believe it's six or eight feet. So that would preclude your, your larger trees and things like that, if the board is looking for vegetation along the ground.
This will be, you, you're saying six to eight feet? So it won't have access for two vehicles to come and go? Like, one coming out and one going in?
It's two lanes, it's a 30-foot wide, but.
Oh, okay, I see the 30 feet.
Along Fox's Ridge Road, along the front of our property, there's approximately a six or eight-foot cut there for the road. So if you were looking to put vegetation, specifically trees, no, to the left side, right through there, in front of the grass pond, it would be difficult for things like trees, for vegetation along that, that strip of property.
Need all, all the setbacks to the neighbors? Road? Wetland? Note 13, sign. To the next page, in the middle.
All materials and construction shall conform with applicable town and state codes.
Under the edge of wetland, that's the note?
So if you're talking about the edge of wetland, no?
Yeah.
That'd be on the existing conditions plan. Page two or three?
Three, yeah.
There it is, yeah, okay.
You guys did get hard copies of all this, these maps?
Um, yeah. You're going to have the sign and stuff, or?
It's sanctioned. Stop sign, too?
Yep.
So for that waiver with the WB40s, are you willing to, would you be willing to say, okay, you're just not going to allow them if one shows up?
Yeah, absolutely. John could put it in the contract that the maximum size truck's a 30-foot U-Haul box truck, or something like that as well.
Will there be surveillance on site?
Yeah, two-story house over here.
Wow, very funny. So no, no plans for that, or yes, or?
Uh, yeah, there, there would be.
It's all cold storage, or you're going to have heated buildings, or?
All 10 o'clock at night? That's the way I'm reading it. You're going to have people working there until 10:00 PM?
No, no.
That's just a general?
The storage, you know, I don't know exactly the hours, but I'm thinking anywhere from seven to eight, or it could be eight to eight, or.
Well, not, we're.
I was saying, working.
When it's being built. This plan says it can work up to 10 o'clock at night.
And then 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM on a Sunday?
We'll look, we'll revise that.
Yeah.
What's that?
Construction hours?
Yeah.
From 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Building it, yeah.
Building it.
I think I took, I might have found that in the, the regulations, but, um, we're acting.
We'll revise that.
But we'll revise that.
Planning Board would like.
Yeah.
I don't think I could get anybody to work that late.
I was going to say, not, not in this day and age, there's no hellbuck that'll work that long.
3:00, 3:00 ourselves pushing it.
So this is just going to be, there's going to be no storage of vehicles or RVs on site?
No.
On the, on the storage part, no.
But yes, somewhere else on there?
Well, no, I have no, I mean, I have, like, vehicles and stuff on the other part already, but, um, but not. That's just going to be a storage unit place.
Note number 16, refuse pickup will be by private contractor. But then here, we have all waste will be carried out by customers. No waste disposably required. Is it going to be carry-in, carry-out, or are you providing refuse?
It'll be carry-in, carry-out, we'll remove the note, thank you. They'll hand you on a check for cleanup after the fact.
And is there some detail in here about that soil filter you're putting down front?
In that plan set you have, not yet, but in this, this coming plan set you will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be something we definitely want to see.
Absolutely.
Any plans for spill kits or anything like that on the site for any?
Not at this time, no.
No water requirements?
Nope, no water or sewer. Only electric.
Well, yeah, I mean, if somebody in the store has this material, I guess. Well, yeah, I mean, if somebody in the store has this material, I guess is the question, like paint or?
Yeah, that's why I asked about the spill kits, just, you know, even trucks leaking oil and who knows what's.
Well, I think, um, my opinion is I don't see any showstoppers jumping off. I think the process would be to get an application in so we can go further. I think we're gonna need detail on the soil filter. Um, we'll be concerned about that with all the pavement going down. Uh, you talked a little bit about the runoff, so again, I haven't had a chance to read any of this, but hopefully, you know, in your plans, you'll talk about that, addressing the runoff. Um, the, uh, same thing with the traffic flow and, and there'll be no parking, but the traffic flow in one way to address the fire trucks coming in. I think the, the whole buffer issue, I hear what you're saying about the slope, but we'll wanna go see it, we'll schedule a site walk at some point.
Absolutely. So we've already prepared a drainage report, drainage analysis for the site, we have the details, we just didn't wanna flood the board during the pre-application process with that information.
Appreciate it. I don't have any other questions at this point.
At this point, no? What do you guys anticipate coming forward with the, the application?
Well, I mean, we're hoping to get on the nine twenty-one planning board meeting, the next one later this month. Um, yeah, what would the next steps be, so we'll bring by?
Yeah, we'll get the, we'll get the application, pay some fees for the, for the process, and then, yeah, we'll put you on the agenda.
So if we got the entire application package to the board?
If you can get it to me, if you can get it to me, I'll, before next week, I will call the board, have them, if they have the ability to come to the town hall, have them pick up the packets so that they can have a big review of everything that you're giving to us.
Okay.
Um, you know, so if you can give it to me, if you can give it to me, like, a week in advance of the nine twenty-one.
Okay.
I'm sure the board would appreciate that.
Okay.
How much time do you require for making notifications to the town? Or, or to Butters and, and whatnot? That's the one threshold that I just wanna make sure that we meet?
Yeah, a couple of weeks. You're talking like when we do, like, a public hearing situation, yeah, at least a couple of weeks.
So is the twenty-first realistic if we get the application?
Well, we're not gonna do a public hearing on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Um, it'll, the notification just is more for the public hearing. Um, and, yeah, we, we do two weeks for that.
Okay.
Yeah, at that first meeting, I think we'd look for completeness, right, to make sure
Yeah.
All the blocks were checked, and it'll probably drive more questions when we get a chance to look at it.
Absolutely.
I think we'd probably schedule a site walk, would be my bet. And timing-wise, we'd probably try to do that before the following meeting.
What's that?
The site walk.
Oh, yeah, so the first week in October, I mean, yeah, we'd have to try to schedule it so we can, you know, try to keep everything moving pretty, pretty good.
That's what I would think.
Perfect, we'll work on getting this to you, no waiting on Monday, Tuesday next week?
Yeah, and now, like I said, I'll call the board members and they'll have them come in, and so they have some time to review it at home.
Yeah.
And they'll make notes for you guys, so if they have any questions, they'll be able to address them and not say, well, I just got this information because I had done that to them in the past.
And that application is all online now?
I'm not too sure if it is, I will email you tomorrow.
All right, all right.
I think the application might have been in the email, the submission I sent you, um, with all the stuff, but I'm not a hundred percent positive.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, we saw that
Huh?
We saw that the website's changed within the last week here, and we saw that there was an online
We're having complications with it.
Okay.
I can't figure out the new website.
I'll see you then.
And I can't change, I can't make, at this point, I have, I can't make any changes. I used to be able to go on, and if there was missing a document or something like that, I could put it on there, or, you know, whatever, take something off, but we don't have access to that website yet, so, yeah, hopefully soon.
Okay. All right, so you'll let us know, be it paper or electronic, and we'll move forward from there?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it for tonight, because I had a, we had a cancellation, a guy came in, was looking for greatest practical extent, but, um, after some more review, they, he backed out of it because he wanted, the property owner didn't want the expense.
Hey, yeah, just a question, Jason, in the minutes, and we had talked about this on that childcare application, where it had been so long, we talked about it, um, oh, it is off, it's, never mind, I withdraw.
I took it off there.
I withdraw my question.
Yeah, no, we took it off, I think we took it off last week. Um, I, I just haven't heard anything, and I'm, it's not my responsibility to chase people.
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, at the
I actually made a phone call last week.
Oh, you did?
I didn't get a hold of anybody.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, so, yeah, we, we just took it off, and, you know, unfortunately, they'll have to resubmit if that's, if they choose to.
So the Gavin Road one went away, right?
Yeah.
It did, yeah. Yeah, um, so these guys are gonna resubmit some more stuff for us for the next meeting, trying to think if I have anything else. Um, I, I gotta remember, there is something, but I don't have it, that's top of my head, I'm trying to think of what it is. Oh, the Kelly, I think it's first week, first meeting in October, um, the solar for
Yeah.
They, it's, I had asked them if they were gonna, you know, at the beginning of, were they trying to get on the September meeting, and they said more realistic, it's gonna be the beginning of October.
To shrink the size, right?
Yeah, shrinking it, but they have to redo it again because they didn't start the project within two years, so they lost their
Oh.
You know, they didn't, so when you don't, yeah, so they didn't start it within two years, so they had to start doing it all over again. I mean, you guys have all the documentation, but they're actually just shrinking the size so there'll be less impact.
Well, I don't have all the documentation.
Right, no, and I don't either, so I wasn't, I was hired, and I think they approved it that first week that I was here.
Yeah.
That's before me.
I think you and I were the only ones tonight, Gavin was sitting there for it.
Greatest practical extent For a boathouse.
Say again?
Greatest practical extent for, um, he calls it a boathouse, but it's, it was a boathouse, it's like five feet off the water, it's falling down, or it's getting ready to fall down, and he wants to just replace it. So, yeah, that's, I thought he'll come in, move to a site walk for that one.
That it?
Yeah, you guys give any thoughts on zoning amendments? I mean, I know it's still early, and we don't have storage in our zoning book either. I don't know if we wanted to start addressing that, or if we wanted to just go towards, leave it where it is.
Well, we tried, and, because we probably had a camaraderie place or something, it didn't get passed. Didn't we, when that storage was one of them?
Right, and it was dramatic.
And then we said, I think when Bernie was on the board, he said
It already?
Professional building greater than twenty-five hundred, you really don't need it, you know, it falls under that. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I don't
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we gotta get that one, uh, thing about the paper out of there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Yeah, that's
Easy enough.
I have to find out where that one was.
It was in sub
Subdivision?
Subdivision.
Or subdivision?
Subdivision, yeah.
But I don't even know
About that new law with, uh, that new housing law, but where we had already done tiny homes, I think we're pretty, pretty well covered there.
Yeah, well, our ordinance is really set up to come, uh, against that, so, I mean, you have, our ordinance is set up so that you have allowed an eighty, you're allowed eighty-U's, but then, once you have more than one eighty, you have to, it becomes a multifamily, which then you have to start adding more road frontage and acreage to it, and then it's still not allowed in some zones. So, yeah, our ordinance is set up really, is pretty well for that, to not allow, um, uh, yeah, a, a bunch of dwellings on one property. And then, there's even a footnote in our thing that says for multifamilies, you know, if you have two different single homes on it, I, I only know this because I read it today, uh, you have to have it registered in the, uh, the registry of deeds that that property can no longer, cannot be split ever.
Ooh.
Yeah.
That's in the ordinance?
Yeah, it's footnote R nine on the back of the land use chart. Because I have a guy looking possibly to do a minor subdivision, just one lot.
Already a house on what?
There's a house being built right now, but he, it's a six-acre lot, and, um, he had, I can't remember how many acres he had, he just built one, and then he chipped off that, and now he's doing another one, now he's, I don't want him to start another one.
He built one, then he's building another one, then he wants to build another one, wasn't that already?
No, he's, he's right now, he's good, well, he's built one, building, he sold that, and they, he chipped off that one lot, so that's, now he's building one right now, and that's all, you know, but he wants to do another one, but I told him that it's a subdivision, so he can't. And then if he, he's like, well, what if I build a, build it, but don't, you know, and I go, then I have to have you do this, and you don't wanna do that, you know, because then you can't split the property, you've defeated what you're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Hundred seventeen, you folks in the last seven minutes talked about
Do you wanna come up to the podium?
Something that I brought to Jason's attention.
That's the
Steve bike, one sixty-two East Shore Drive. I had a, a neighbor that decided to bury a, about a hundred-pound dog within fifty feet of my well, and also fifty feet within the lake, and they thought it was okay, and all the people that I've talked to in the state said, that's not a good idea, but yet, there's nothing that they can hang their head on and say, tell her to get it the hell out of there. So here's what I've been asking, Jason, you folks, King has put something in writing, a hundred feet setback, two hundred feet setback, this can't happen, because my well now is in danger of being poisoned with lichate, I think they call it. This dog is gonna just, um, let go fifty, fifty gallons of lichate into, into the, the soil, that's gonna head down, it's on a slope, head down towards my well and the lake. And I've, I've contacted Mark King, who wrote guidelines for the United States Department of Agriculture, and he had said, it's not a good idea, but it doesn't come under chapter two eleven, which doesn't make any sense, because a domestic animal doesn't fall under this, but yet, a farm animal that a hundred pounds or less can't be buried within a hundred feet or two hundred feet, but yet, a domestic animal can be, that makes no sense. So, and I've gone to the health code enforcement person, they won't even come out. They just did an email, and I think it meets the guidelines, it didn't even come out and look, it doesn't meet the guidelines, because it was a document that was written in twenty twelve by David Roke, who I can't even find in the state anymore, and it seems to be outdated, because everything else afterward is always two hundred, hundred, two, two hundred feet. A cemetery setback, it's two hundred feet, but yet, this person can bury a dog, and now they just got another one, so, I mean, we're gonna have a pet cemetery next door, so
Do you know if the pet was euthanized?
That's what I don't know, and the woman lies all the time, so I'd have no idea whether it died of natural causes, whether it died of some disease, or it was euthanized.
Well, when we read the thing about if it was euthanized
If it was euthanized, its phenobarbital is gonna develop even more over the next two years, it can kill my dog.
Yeah, all right.
That, that's my concern, and again, I'll never get the truth out of the person. She called the sheriff when I asked her if she buried her dog there, when the neighbor told me she did, and she, and, and she confirmed it, and the deputy said, yes, she did, but it's okay. Okay, the deputy, he doesn't know the laws, he doesn't know the stuff, so anyway, long story short is, I just need you guys or somebody to put something in place so it doesn't happen to another person. I have two lakefronts, I pay over five thousand a year in taxes, I just want my water protected, and, and I don't think that's outrageous to ask for. I've, I've been given the runaround, I, I can't even get, um, a, a state rep or, or a state senator to even pick up the phone. Why don't you folks wanna protect your waters? Makes no sense. So anyway, that's what I'm asking for. Um, even, you know, if you can't get this person to dig it up and get rid of it and dispose of it properly, at least make sure it doesn't happen again to somebody else. It makes no sense, because it's, it's outrageous, because now I gotta have my water tested every month, at eighty bucks a month, to make sure that the, the nitrate levels aren't spiking. Right now, it's just under one.
How long ago did this, did this happen?
She buried it between June twenty-fifth and July fourth.
So have you had a couple of tests between?
I've only had one, and now I'm gonna test it again in another couple of weeks.
Were the results favorable of that one test, or?
It was, the nitrate level was just under one, so I don't know. I, I don't know what it would have been if I tested it two years ago, I don't know.
But does that fall within the parameters of acceptable?
It's okay right now.
Okay, good.
But again, I don't know the next one, because this is gonna take time for this thing to blow, and then release all that lichate or whatever they call it. And it's, it's just, it's insane, it's just, I, I'm just, it, it's mind-boggling why somebody thought this was a good idea. And again, it's, it's a good slope towards the water, and it's gonna head right for my well and the loon pond. They've already got enough issues going on right now with large weed, Chinese mystery snails, um, it's, it's gonna turn into a swamp if they continue to do, let people do stuff like this. But anyway, I, I'm just hoping that, you know, somebody can help out and
One of the things we mentioned here at the end was things we're looking to do for the ordinance, and so that'll be on the list, we'll just see, it's not a quick solution.
No, I, no, I get it, I get it, but, you know, it's just, we can get it moving forward, because Acton's got ten bodies of water, I mean, that, that's a lot of real estate and a lot of, a lot of tax revenue. Anyway, I appreciate your time, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I wanna go again?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn for the evening.
I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
All right, thank you.